We will move on to letter B, the first readings of some 200s. So we'll start with policy 201. Turn it over to Charles and Amy if you want to just give us a little. Here's what we're thinking.
All right. Yes, I'm gonna, I'm just pulling up my email real fast.
I think if I could just say, you know, based on the recommendation of the board to have Charles and I kind of do some pre-work to bring forward using MSBA as a base model. We, you know, just to kind of share the work that we did, we worked on it separately. We kind of compiled thoughts in a Google Doc together and then we met together. And with the goal in mind of having the 200s completed and approved by the end of the regular meeting on June 10th, that was what the board had, had, the will of the board was. And our, our goal together, at least from my, you know, you add what you, if there's anything different, Director Johnson, but our goal was to take MSBA policy and look at what we currently have, if there was anything that our policy stated that wasn't in MSBAs, to somewhat bring them together so that we had something to bring to the board. My hope is that if there are suggestions, that those are heard, heard by the board and that we can move in getting the will of the board on each policy tonight. Because if we're, if we drag it out, we will be far past our June. So again, like this pre-work, we spent, we spent many hours, Charles, Director Johnson probably more than I, because he actually did the documentation of it. But we spent hours and again, it's, it is just bringing something forward. For if you have comments, we'll hear that and hopefully tonight we can get the will so we can move forward and have a final reading next.
Yes, and if you have any suggestions on a way that you want to see anything, any additional notes or anything like that moving forward, please let us know so that we can put it all together and make next time smoother and easier as we, as we go through. So to go through 201, legal status of the school board, this is MSBA policy with very minute changes that Director Bullion had just to basically clean it up. Very simple, very easy. We did add in the student representative, the student representative as the ex facto member.
I think you're here, you know.
Oh, I am, yeah. Yep, 201. Yes.
Yeah, so first of all, the student rep is not an ex officio by legal definition as everything else and they're not a legal part of the school board. That's why we had the separate policy that I do think the student council needs to review every year because it's theirs. They could decide not to be part, they could decide to change it. One of the purposes of having the students here is to get them acquainted with this process as well as to hear, as well as a way to hear their voice, but also with leadership skills and everything like that. So, you know, the student rep wasn't always here and sometimes they don't have a sub, maybe one year the council president may want to do it. We've had other school districts that want to put it up for anybody on the council or anybody in the district, so that really should be separate. The other, so that I don't, first of all, they're not a legal part, so.
Scratch C.
Scratch the student representative out of there again. Take out the, take out the rep.
And I would strongly suggest that we actually take policy 201 dot one and send it back to the student council as, as a, for them to actually determine and be a part of that leadership and understand what it's like to write a policy. I, I've asked for that several years because I think it's part of their learning, it's part of their leadership. And again, I don't think we had one before 2016 at all. And so that's just something, I just think it'd be a good learning experience for them because that's what they're, they're for also, as well as to give student voice. I'm not, excuse me, I'm not done. Now, the MSBA model policy in this area combines management and governance. It's kind of a word salad in a way, particularly with one of the paragraphs in there. The last red line from the MSBA was in basically 2002 and then 2009 and the latest one in 2021 or 2022 actually only changed the names because it was there as a template based upon, again, the size of the district, what we want to do. So there are some districts out there that take all of that out and just say, because the statute doesn't represent latest interpretations by courts. Like there's a couple of other districts that either use this and don't really ever review it that much, like the, just the template. But there's a few of them out there that adopted the language. The basis for the establishment and operation of the school board lies in the state and Minnesota constitution, Minnesota statutes, court interpretations of these laws and the powers implied under them. So for instance, if there's any type of court decision, which I'm not aware of any, that it would automatically encompass that and you wouldn't have to do that. But the student rep really is not part of the legal definition of any school board. And then the other thing is, is adding in school breakfast. That was a temporary funding thing and that probably is going to go away. So I don't want the district to be responsible for that piece either in the other policy. So that was my, that was my comment, but most particularly the student rep. And like I said, I'd like them to take a look at their, the policy about that, the 201 dot one.
202.
Or 202 dot one.
So my feedback on the 201, whatever the policy was for students, I actually felt like it was 99% procedure and really should lie within the student council procedures. I don't even think it's necessary for us to have it within our policies. So.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. So I think that, I agree scratching the student rep out of there. And then if it's statutorily, there's some talk that there might be some statute laws changing with that, then we redo the policy. But for now, that would be my recommendation. I agree about the breakfast. If that's going to change, then yeah, then we maybe keep it general so that we don't have to update it. But other than that. And, oh, and then I have one thing about vacancies. So I know we talked about, we added that part about.
Are we going?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
No, 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 that's part of the whole policy.
Just want to make sure we have 201.
I did want to address that, but the compensation and the vacancies I also think need to go because the compensation is determined in the ord meeting and the vacancies is its own policy, which we definitely need to review. But that doesn't belong in the legal status of a school board.
Just from an admin side, just point of clarity if I may, Chair White. So is the board, is the board interested in repealing 202.1 and in that being subordinated than student council? Kind of works through that for procedures?
I'm good with that.
That sounds fine with me. I agree with Director Franz that it could be a win-win.
Okay.
Should we get a will?
A consensus?
Anyone have a problem with that?
Anyone? Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you. That's all I needed.
So we can cross that one out?
I think so. We still on 201?
Yes.
So 202.1 is going to go to?
Student council.
Student council to be reworked.
Well, no, they become the procedure.
Yes, that could be a board policy. They should write their own and present it to us. Actually, I think that would be a great learning.
When we were discussing 202, 202.1, student representative on the board, currently it's its own policy. It was my recommendation to keep it its own policy because of it's a separate thing that can be changed. The question I have is if we are ready as a board to say that we don't need the policy altogether, is it the will of the board that we don't have 202.1? I think for bringing forward this information, we combined 202.1 into it. And again, I, that was my recommendation to leave it by itself because it is a separate, so we didn't have to bring the whole policy together. But when, when Director Johnson and I were, were working on this, I said, you know, we'll just get, we'll have the board.
So if I can remind, sorry.
Just a, just a little historical context. My very first year here, this conversation came up and the former Chair Nelson and I met with the student council. And so I, I hear things, I hear two, three different things. The process of selection term and all that, I think let the student council govern that because that was something that she and I brought to them to inquire because there was conversation whether it should be one person, the whole year, rotating, all that kind of stuff. There's a scholarship that they usually can apply for, so it obviously means more if, because it's not huge. So if you're splitting that among three students, it doesn't have that much of an impact. But I think the purpose that you all in policy declare you want to have a student rep, I think still needs to be stated somewhere in terms of whether it's buried in the regular 202, that, you know, as part of the school board, we will also have a student board rep in whatever, put it there. But unless the board is like, and I don't hear the board walking away from having a student rep. So I would just say maybe find the purpose in the regular 202 then with all this other stuff going away.
So what I suggested is that, first of all, it, it doesn't belong in the legal status. If we're going to leave it the title the way it is, and this is the true legal status of the school board, it basically follows statute. And there's some things in here that are, that, that don't belong in there. But I personally would like to see the 202 dot one or whatever it's called. Actually give that each year to the student council and we just reference it that we're going to, because they may change. You know, the year that, that it did go to the student council, the next year, they do have new leadership and they do decide on how they're going to delegate that out and that's part of their growth. That's part of the purpose of them being on the student council to make those types of decisions. I know that during COVID, they didn't show up at all and they decided instead to be part of the committees. Now, we didn't change the policy at all or even, I think we didn't even have one at one point in time. But as their own body, that's part of their learning of determining how they want to engage.
I absolutely agree with that. And I'm just wondering if in 202, when you look at ex officio members, you know, like, do we just list them as an ex officio member?
Technically, they're not an ex officio.
They're not. Okay. I don't know.
Legally, they're not defined as you are, because, yeah.
It's just another sentence that says the board will have a student rep.
A number four student representative.
Yes. I think we can just write it as number four student representative.
Just like I have set up in 202 right now, instead of having everything on there like it is, I'll just have one liner, right, that says the board will have one student representative, right? Period.
Okay.
That's, that's very.
Yeah. And then the council can decide each year.
So we're talking on here.
So, so that's, so that's 202. Can we, I think.
Can we get back to?
Go back to 201.
201?
So on 201 specifically, is there anything else? We talked about maybe scratching 4C.
Forming partnerships and ad hoc committees is not part of the legal status. It is at all. Just number nine, F9.
Can you, can you just tell me where you're at so I can?
F9?
Okay.
Sounds like a fighter jet. Yeah.
Well, that's listed in MSBA.
But it's, I was, I was going to say, that is, that particular F9, that language is referenced.
That one's not, no, that's.
It's referenced similarly in 213.
Yeah.
And our board's norms.
I wonder if we, if we even need it here because it's, it's already in 213F.
So that was one that we had in our old policy. We must have added that and just tried again.
213F says the school board may establish such ad hoc committees for specific purposes as it deems appropriate.
And it was in our 201, which is why it's in this 201.
So you moved it basically.
So I, I moved it over. So I'm trying, so just to give everybody peace of mind, right, if there wasn't something that kind of connected the dots between everything from ours to MSBAs, it was moved over. So as long as everybody is good with not keeping it, I'll cut it.
Yeah, because it's referenced later, so I think we're, I think we're good.
And again, the MSBA temp is a template that covered both governing and managing boards and they have not updated this really in decades.
And I just want to make sure that everything was, was covered, right? And we're not trying to.
So we're cutting nine?
Nine will be cut. Got it?
And then compensation and vacancies. Compensation is in the organizational meeting. It is not part of the legal status. There's, as long as we get paid, I believe it's a dollar, we could do whatever we want there. So compensation, move that to the organizational meeting where we decide that and vacancies is its own policy. And to keep things clean, we really should have, and the vacancy policy, by the way, is fairly broad too, so it's very much up to independent school boards, which we do need desperately to redo that one and do that in a way that we can feel consistent. So that, I would move that out there because otherwise, when you start talking about legal status, really the, the statutes are very, very broad because we're independent school districts. And they're very broad because it's got to cover districts of a couple hundred to over 10,000, 20,000 in some cases, kids. So, you know, they, they kind of add in language in here that's not necessarily word salad, so to speak, but they compensate for it with, with the powers A, B, and C to make sure you can go either direction. And that's why I said I've seen some districts that basically say, okay, if you're trying to talk about the legal status of the school board, there's, I found several of them of our like size that say, have the language, the basis for the establishment lies in Minnesota constitution, statutes and the interpretation of the laws. Now that means that our entire policy would be one sentence, which some of them just don't even have the policy. But again, it's, it's, it's meant to be really, really broad. So if we want to make it doable, sort of like most policies should be where they can be auditable and consistent in language, then we can either mention the statutes or whatever, but we should stay with the definition of what the legal definition of a school board is or the legal status, which is only given to us by, by statute with a lot of caveats of being an independent school district.
So I think they do list that though. I mean, they break that down into all the different powers and duties. Those all align back to statute. So I'm, I'm a little confused. I understand what you're saying, that there's new case law and all that kind of stuff. That's going to happen anytime. But I feel like this policy in particular, MSBA, does a really good job of aligning it right back to the law. And it's pretty clean, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry.
Actually, it's not aligned to the law. It's broad because the law is very broad. So when you have the school board shall do whatever in the powers and duties, it actually covers both managerial boards. And if you look back in the history of the MSBA, the last real change that they made was in 2002 and then they have one in 2009 that, that added an additional statute. And then in 2022, I believe, they just changed the names of the statutes to align with the current naming. So they've left it really, really broad for a long time. And, you know, most school boards can cut and paste this because the legal status, no matter what, is going to end up in statute. But when you go beyond the legal status about talking about providing breakfast, compensation, student, whatever, that's where we're kind of blending the two. And so, you know, that's.
So are we mostly talking about six and seven to be scratched and they're covered somewhere else? Is that where you're getting at?
Well, vacancies is covered in a separate policy and compensation is covered in the organizational meeting. And other than, I think, $1 is what I was told when I looked into this several years ago, we're not required to give ourselves any money, you know, that sort of thing. So it's not really part of the legal status.
Director Franz, can I ask you a question?
That's why I'm just, since it's already covered.
Are you, are you referencing the compensation piece because, because of we're going to MSBA policy? Is that why you're referencing why compensation is out of place? Because compensation is in legal status of the school board 201, which was policy done in 2022.
Okay, so.
So that's, that's why it's in here. That's why, that's why it's put in here. So that's, that's why it's in here. So.
No, I get that. And what I'm trying to say is the template for the MSBA is more than two decades old and a lot of school districts don't use it or they only stick it with the legal status, referencing statute only. We are not required to pay ourselves. The compensation is actually determined in organizational thing, which has been a standard for some time. So the only thing we need to do is, I think the requirement is to get a dollar, a minimum of a dollar. So that's why I'm saying if we're going to talk about compensation part of the organizational meeting and we make that decision every year, then let's not have it in two places. So when we change one, we got to change another. And then the vacancies, of course, if we say per statute, the statute's also very broad. So when we go into our vacancy policy, we have a conflict. We'll have one saying it only follows the minimum statute and another one that may be more detailed. So you don't, I would prefer if, when we do discuss them, that they are mutually exclusive. So when we update them, we're not, we don't have conflicts built into the policies. And then also that we have clear ownership and change it in one place. That's, that's all I'm saying there. But again, keep in mind that, again, this is a template. And that's why there's a lot of school districts that don't even have this. They just basically say, yep, we have a school board per that language that I just said or per statute, and then they go on with it. So that's why I was saying, you know, we're, we're dealing with something that really hasn't been updated in decades.
Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to understand. So the compensation was on our existing 201 policy. We added it to the MSBA's template, right? That's why we have it read. So you're saying you think we could just remove it and we don't need it?
Yeah. The thing is, is that we haven't, and historically, since I've been on the board.
For a reason. I don't know why. I'm curious.
Well, since we're going through this, like I'm saying, we've had, we haven't really ever had to use this policy, so it's never really been challenged or whatever. But it has been a, an issue where as we're going through, since we started the policy committee and since we started going through this, that we actually tried to do something that's a little bit more enforceable and with the times. And like I said, the MSBA template that we've never questioned here because the only thing we've ever really updated is the legal references when the, when the MSBA put in the changes, I'm sorry, when the legislature changed the things. All I'm saying is if we're going to do this, a legal status doesn't include the student. But we do include, we do have a vacancies and if we leave this language in here, that means we're going to conflict with even our current vacancies policy.
The way I understood this is that we would be getting rid of 201.1 and just referencing the statute. Did I misunderstand that? So we won't have a policy? Or did I misunderstand that?
I thought that was 201 dot one is a student rep.
That's 202.1.
201 dot one is a vacancy.
Sorry. The numbers are driving me nuts.
Yeah. So 201 dot one is a school board vacancy. So the way I understood this, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're removing 201 dot one and instead we would reference that will follow this statute process.
Yes. So I was, I was going to get to that point on the vacancies.
Well, since we're there, we may as well. Go ahead.
Yes. Is that we can, right, the way the vacancies policy is written is basically a copy and paste from the law of, of what it is. And it doesn't really outline a procedure at all. So.
It's not a policy either. It's just a cut and paste. Yeah.
Yes. It, it's a policy number. The way, the policy number that we have is basically a copy and paste from, from the law into our policy number. So that's why it is written the way that it is here. It fits, in my opinion, with legal status of the school board because it references the same references, right, as school board vacancies.
Right.
Right? All of the, all of the legal references, right, cross-reference into the same thing as vacancies. So, so then, right, we can then take an actual procedure to say, this is how we would do school board vacancies, right? And this would just be an example, right? Somebody resigns, right? Okay. At that point, 30, right, 10 days later, right, it would, application would open up, right? 10 days later, it would close. 10 days after that, we would have a, a, right? And we could lay that out and we could then put it in our board book, right? And that would be, be the procedure because we would all have to approve the board book itself and the board book would go in there. That, that would be a suggestion, right? It wouldn't have to go in policy and all we would have to do is ultimately, right, we'd leave it there because we're following the law, right, which we could leave this vacancy piece in here. We're following the law because I just talked to MSBA and I ref, I asked them, Director Atkinson sent an email, right? Director Bullion was on the email. They said they don't have anything as far as laying it out, the procedure of how we fill the vacancy, but the law states this is how you have, this is what has to be done. Okay, cool. So if we only do this one line, we are hitting the wicket. The way we do the wicket is completely up.
We'll lay it out in a different document.
Can I?
That is correct.
Yeah. And that, and that can be completely like further on down the line because what we currently have, my one line hits the policy that we do have.
Okay. So I also had to deal with MSBA last year quite extensively on this.
Understandable.
And the vaca, the vacancy statute is very broad because the first thing they asked is, don't you have a vacancy policy? And I was like, yeah, but it's, it's vacuous, right? It's, there's nothing there. And it's, we've had it done before. And usually the board gets together or the executive committee gets together or whatever and says, okay, this is how we're going to do it this time. Sometimes we had people apply. Sometimes they actually had to like reach out in the community and grab somebody in and beg them. So there wasn't really a voting procedure or whatever. Now, the voting procedure can change each time, but they highly recommended we had a vacancy policy simply because of that very reason of what happens when you do have more than one person apply and you don't even have an, you don't even have a policy that says they, they need to apply. And the, again, in my time and also dealing with other statutes like this, not just for school boards, the, these ones are written very broad so that the school districts can determine their own and as long as you follow the minimum statute. What I'm afraid is going to happen, if I do a use case and we have a policy or a procedure and we have a school board policy that sits at the top of the pyramid, right? And it says, our only requirement here is to follow the statute. Procedures aren't a requirement. Procedures, especially for boards, they can come and go if it's not actually memorialized in a policy. So what you can get is somebody putting a complaint going, but that's all you need to do. And the other one, and, and a procedure that's not part of policy then comes in and says, you know, something else. And it's like, well, they, they will challenge this because we start with policy and if the policy only says statute, that means underneath we can have somewhat of a free for all depending on the environment. So in that use case, and that's kind of what we just went through. And I think Chair White, you and I have talked about this, we definitely need a vacancy policy.
We need, I would say we need a vacancy procedure, whether it's a policy or not.
Director Franz, please take a look at Oseo. They have in theirs, they have it listed as this is the policy. Director France, please take a look at Oseo. They have in theirs, they have it listed as, this is the policy. But then for under two hundred, right next to, so if you can imagine that we are having, we're developing this board handbook where we would have, this is our policy, and right behind it, procedures for appointments to temporarily fill a board vacancy. And it's very spelled out. It's, it's very clean cut. It's something that our full board would align behind. Farmington does the exact same thing. So I don't, if it's spelled out online, it's a lot better than leaving it up to three members on the executive committee or one, the board chair determining their own procedure. I mean, I, I really believe that we need to have a procedure spelled out. And I do believe that the vacancy does follow the law. So I do, I like the way it's actually done. So you don't have to have an, go find another piece of paper. And then there's also confusion between the law and the procedure. And that's where it got really, really confusing. So.
And that's exactly why we don't want that. So you, it's good that you mentioned that one of those school districts, because I think both of them do not have a policy two oh one at all. They simply state the basis for establishment and operation of the school board is the state and Minnesota constitution, Minnesota statutes, court interpretations, and these laws, and the power implied underneath them. That's actually from Oseo. So with that in mind.
Well, Oseo takes, Oseo actually combines multiple different two oh, their two oh one is like
Right.
super long and it's multiple policies combined into one. So.
Actually, they, they really don't have the separate two oh one to avoid just this. And they don't say just the, so, because that's where I took it from. Um, and others, I found about four or five others that did the same. And, you know, and again, um, I just don't want us to literally step on a rake with this one by having the policy state the very broad, um, statute. Um, and then not have a vacancy policy that incorporates the procedure exactly as you just said. That was my purpose. So you don't want to have a conflict. You don't have one policy saying minimum is the statute and another one going into the procedure, because then we've got a conflict. And that's what I don't want.
So then I would recommend, then I would recommend us.
The statute doesn't mention the procedure, though.
No, no. It leaves it up to the school boards, the independent school districts.
Correct. Which is why we would create the statute within the, the board book.
Mm-hmm. Yes, it has to be in the board book.
Because our two oh one dot one today is not a procedure. Like, it doesn't say how you're going to vote, right? So like, I think I'm totally fine getting rid of that and just referencing this.
Yeah, I am too.
Because it is a copy and paste of the statute and then agree we need a procedure.
I think this simplifies it, to be honest with you. I think ours is, it was super confusing.
Well, it's not a procedure right now. It doesn't.
Well, I, I have no problem. It, maybe it's semantics, whether it's a policy or a procedure, as long as it's spelled out and understood that this is what the board is going to do in a certain case, I have no problem with just leaving that. And, and trusting our handbook to handle the rest of that's, the board. I, I understand what you're saying. I, I really, I really do. And I, I would like to.
And we just went through this, is what I'm saying. So, and it was the exact same issue we're discussing here that you're saying you're okay with that actually came up.
No, I think it's gonna get better, actually. I think what we handle, this is the why we're doing this, to make it better.
And so the vacancy policy should stay in place. And the statutory reference should go in one policy. And, you know, I went through this for two and a half months last year. And that was the, that basically, um, i- it was, it was an issue. You, you, if you have one and then you have someone who doesn't like it, they'll say, well, you know, procedure, if we don't stick that in the vacancy policy even at a higher level, we're gonna end up with a conflict.
Well, could the vacancy policy reference the board handbook?
Yes.
Could, could, could that be the vacancy policy?
Exactly.
Doesn't have to spell anything out. It can say, this is where it is.
Or we could just put that as a bullet under here.
Yeah.
They're kidding.
I think that the issue today is that two oh one dot one is not, it does not spell out the process of how we will.
Right, right.
So I think it's like, it's basically copy paste, as you said. So it really does us nothing. And so I'm totally fine just referencing that and then having, whether we have it as a separate procedure that we redo.
Vacancy A, number one.
Policy, doesn't matter.
Board handbook.
Which we should be at least scouring once a year to make sure we don't wanna make any chance.
Right.
If, if, I think that process might work.
Yep.
I think that's good.
Yep.
Can't. I just wanna make one thing. It can until somebody says, but wait a minute, this policy references only the statute and this other one references the statute and a procedure that isn't backed by statute. If we come into that situation where you have a board member or somebody applying that questions that, you're always better off just putting it one place. Also, if, for instance, the, um, we don't have hyperlinks, which I, I understand why, but if you reference it in one place, you can change it and keep it up to date in one place. And we've just, I just wanna go through history because it has been, that has been an issue too.
Well, maybe.
And we're supposed to learn from history.
And I can, I can understand that. But I, I'm, I'm wondering if, if we would be accomplishing that by making the policy the actual vacancy policy.
The procedure. Yeah, because that's what we haven't had in the past.
Right, that's what I would like.
And, and, um, responsible boards will constantly, um, at least yearly, look at the handbook and make sure that we're, we're still in sync. And I, I think, I think that can work. I, I'm comfortable with it. I, I.
So we're gonna keep the vacancy policy, though, and put?
I, my, my, what I'm saying is the vacancy policy will say, um, the vacancy policy will, will.
Reference a procedure, which is fine.
Yes, well, well, the, the procedure actually is contained in the board handbook.
Correct.
Why don't you just like, why don't you just call it two oh one point one board vacancy procedure? And then it just calls out this procedure because.
That's ideal.
Or just under this section, add B, like, we will have a procedure for vacancies reference. I mean, like, we do.
Well, if we go right behind, like, it would be, you know, so two oh two oh one is school vacancy procedure. So that it's all light out, so that there's no confusion about what the procedure is.
Yep. Instead of having it in the board manual.
No, no, it has to be in the manual too.
But, but in addition to having the procedure right follow the policy, was, was that just saying I'm doing a beacon?
No, no.
They have it all in there. I, I agree. So we're, we're at the same point that I was. Yeah.
So two oh one point one will be school board, it would be school board vacancy procedure instead of a policy. It would be school board vacancy procedure.
It is a policy and procedure. So it's, it's, that's, that's, yeah, I don't care about the nomenclature thing.
I mean, we do have, I mean, we just went through, we have procedures and policies, so I don't care, really. But it really becomes, it really is the procedure of the policy versus laying out the law.
Understood.
So the desire is that we do not put vacancies number seven, that we leave it its own policy.
Yeah, so we would.
Change the title. Am I hearing you correctly? And that the policy and procedure and all that, and our board handbook is usually some of, you know, our board handbook basically is gonna be the two hundreds anyways.
Yeah.
With probably a little bit more meat like we have in the board book training right now.
So I'm okay with that. And then two oh one point one becomes the procedure.
For what we brought forward on two oh one. The proposed is that we take off the vacancies, take off number seven. And leave it in the policy.
Yeah, and it would have to come out of the definition too, because there's a definition part that was added.
There is a definition part.
So there's definition, and then there's number seven.
So take off B.
Take off three B.
Leave two oh one.
Yeah.
Point one.
And that would include both?
Well, I think that needs to come, two oh one point one needs to come up. I, I would, the way that I would do it if I was doing it, I would reference the law, just very simple. Here's the law, the statute, and then write the procedure.
Just like we did here.
Yep, just like there. I would, I would like, I would write that one line and then the rest would be all procedure. Is what, how I would do it if I was writing it.
Yep. That's the way it'll be. Is everybody good with that?
Anybody have a problem with that?
That's where we started. Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Um, yeah, go ahead.
So, um, so we are, I wanna get some clarity on, on the compensation, that, that red part there. That we're saying we don't, that doesn't need to be there or it's, it's part of the organizational meeting?
It's part of the organizational.
So it's not necessary to be here? Is that what I'm hearing is?
I don't care if it's.
Yeah, I, I think.
I'm fine, fine with that.
We added it, so if there's no reason.
Because it wasn't our original one, that's why.
So it doesn't need to be there?
I don't care.
Okay. You have to.
I have one word that I thought would be interesting to talk about, but it's not, it's not a big deal.
So let's, uh, so we're, we're still on two oh one.
We're still on two oh one, I know.
But, okay, so we, we've, we've kinda cleaned that up.
One question to ask. Should we remove breakfasts?
Oh, yeah.
I think because it says, at its discretion, may perform the following at the top. Like, it's not saying we're gonna furnish breakfast or lunches, really. It says, the school board, at its discretion, may, and we do provide breakfast right now, so.
We do, we do currently.
Does give us out.
Can you?
Read that, but if we just have to take it away, it's not breaking policy.
Are breakfasts going away anytime soon?
The only statutory requirement is lunches. And then we got the extra funding, so breakfast wasn't in the, um, MSBA.
I just haven't, even with the most recent, recent cuts, I haven't seen them.
That we can use public monies for meals if it's going over X amount of time. Um, and it's on the natural lunch hour without a break. So that's how we've done stuff like that. We've kind of cut back everything to like coffee or like the things at committees, we buy out of our own pockets.
Right.
The, in the legal definition, they put that we will furnish school breakfast and lunches. And the only thing the statute, no, the only thing the statute requires is that we provide a lunch. The breakfasts were added in with the extra funding. We didn't, um, we had them for free and reduced lunch and we had them offered, but we never offered them for free. And if we do get the funding removed, the only thing Minnesota statute requires is the lunches and then, um, yeah.
So let's take that out.
I, I would highly doubt that the.
Because it does still say may, gives us the, gives us the opening.
We are taking out, and the student representative as a next.
We're scratching C, four C.
Well, no, just the student part.
I mean, that sentence. Was taking the whole thing out.
And I'm right above there on B, so if you all wanna stay right there.
Okay.
Um, I just have a question. It says, board member elections take place on even number years on the regular election day in November, which is generally true, but we have a unique situation this year where we're gonna have a board member election this fall. So I wonder if we should add the word, board member elections generally take place on even numbered years on the regular election day in November.
Does the vacancy policy cover that?
I don't know.
It would.
It, it would.
It would.
It would, but also, um, the, we do it here. Other school districts don't do it uneven numbered. And like you said, so that's why, again, most districts don't get that.
Well, we took this from our policy, that's why. This is a part of our policy.
But again, I wanted to say that we hadn't touched this just because it's not really used. Um, so if we're going to go over it, we might as well either scrap it for what other school districts have done and just place, hey, we're gonna follow statute and any interpretation.
I was gonna say, why do we even need B?
Right.
I mean, we are legally bound to have our elections. That was determined many, many years ago.
Yeah, I would probably scratch it then. Just scratch B.
I would, because right now in the legislative session, there is a bill that's gonna govern, like.
Everything, okay.
Even or odd.
Scratch?
Which may affect vacancies as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Director Atkinson.
That's all I had on that.
Anything else on two oh one?
Nine, um.
Um, Director.
Oh, it's okay. I'll get to me.
No, you go, because I've already said, I've, I've said enough words for the whole week.
Um, this seems very loud to me. I don't know why. Um, okay, um, it wasn't redlined, so I just wanna make sure that I'm reading this correctly. Um, I'm looking at our, um, our board retreat packet from February when we initially started to kind of talk about the two hundreds. Um, and then we got to this point. Number, pardon me, under, well, I'm under the former, so under powers and duties, number four. Um, it doesn't exist anymore. And under powers and duties, as it's currently right now, A, B, C, D. We seem to have deleted, the school board in accordance with statute has delegated all management of the district to the superintendent. Its programs and services and district procedures needed to implement district policy. Superintendent is nowhere in here.
I was.
And I know we were gonna, we had brought that up at our retreat. But it wasn't redlined. It was clearly deleted. So I just, I'd, I'd like to.
Where are?
I think because it's not in MSBA. That's why.
So again, MSBA's A, B, and C is word salad. The school board said superintendent, manage. And then the other one says, the school board exercises administrative functions, legislative character, and they, they kind of, and then the, and then, you know, the, and then they add the sentence, the general charge of the business. The reason they do that is because you have really small school boards and really large ones. None of that's in statute and you're supposed to pick and choose. That's why.
Yeah, I mean, I think ours falls, the, MSBA follows the law. That's, I think that that's the key. I mean, those are the powers and authorities of the school board.
Is the question under, like, powers and duties, the first point?
It's the powers and duties of the school board.
What Director Olsted read is our old two oh one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, number, letter B, number four.
Because a governing board delegates the day-to-day running and the administrative functions one hundred percent to the superintendent. And we oversee the superintendent as our only, um, uh, employee. But again, I can't emphasize this enough, the, the, the template that the MSBA has not changed was meant to be modified by this independent school districts, depending on whether they wanted to be a governing or managing board. And twenty or thirty years ago, there were school districts here with like a hundred people, and the boards were managing boards. They were day-to-day. Matter of fact, there wasn't even a conflict of interest rule at that time that said that you would, you could have, actually have teachers and principals on a board. Um, you know, it didn't really make any difference. That's why I've been trying to say, that's why Oseo took that out and only put that one line in there. Because that is the true legal status of the school board. The rest of it is an independent district. We decide how we govern.
I like the way MSBA is written for simplicity reasons.
Yeah, I feel like, I mean, it's legal status of the school board, though, but like, I guess I don't understand why we ever, I don't know the history of why the language was added or why it would be needed, I guess.
Again, it's, it's kind of word salad. It doesn't say, the statute does not say, we're gonna provide school buildings and erect needed buildings, that sort of thing. It's, the statute's very, very kind of broad and it has pieces of it in here. Um, again, that's why other school districts, a lot of them either accepted it and they never really use it, or they modified them. Um, so.
Again, I'm not following, because MSBA's is simpler. So you're saying we added it and it's word salad or?
MSBA.
Doesn't have that point, the one she's referring to.
It, 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 okay, so again, MSBA's model template. And I use the term word salad loosely because they basically created a master template that would go for all different sizes of school districts and all different types of governing models because we have an independent, all the statutes down there are for independent school districts. So we have a lot of leeway in what we do, uh, unlike other states. Other states, you know, like in Georgia, when they had the Atlanta School Board do something, those guys actually got sent to jail. We don't do that here. We have a lot of leeway and, and not a lot of prescriptive language in the statute, providing we just, you know, practice our, and I'm gonna paraphrase here, our fiduciary duty and stuff like that. So we have, by being a governing board, have delegated the responsibility of day-to-day running of the district to the superintendent, which is perfectly legal in statute. And again, the MSBA model template for this is old and it's meant to, it's just, it's got a lot of words in there and we take it and make it our own. If it's never come into question about who manages the school district and stuff like that, then, then a lot of them don't even use it. But we, as a board, have said so many years ago, we are no longer a managing board. We are a governing board and we're delegating the day-to-day to the superintendent.
And I appreciate that history, Director France. Can you show us, me exactly in Minnesota statute where it says we have the right to do that? Because I'm not seeing it. And I think the key point here is that just because we've done something in the past and how we've operated in the past is not necessarily correct or how it even allows, aligns, aligns with the law. And there is nowhere in Oseo where they.
And there is nowhere in OCEO where they delegate the authority. I looked through their whole entire first two oh one, there is absolutely nowhere saying, there is no state, it's two oh three on theirs, but it's their two oh one. There is no way where, where it says the school board, um, has delegated all management. Um, so, I don't know where you're seeing that, I don't know where you're seeing it in the law, so.
So the law doesn't tell us.
But you just said it does.
No, no, no.
You said the law gives us that authority, and I'm saying, I don't see it in here where it says that.
The law allows us, because we're an independent school district, to make that determination. The law does not state which one we want to be, okay? It gives us.
Determining whether we wanna be managed, like, do what we've done in the past, which is grant all management, or do we wanna be a governing board, like the, the law states, which is our authority, and our, we are to oversee, just like it says in the law, which is the way the policy is written, that the board must have the general charge of the business of the school district, the school has, and just basically how it's read, which is how MSBA policy is written.
The general charge.
Support of keeping it, to be honest with you.
Um, so, but that's, but what Director Olsted, that was the last thing that I was gonna bring up, cause I was gonna see if anybody else caught that. Um, you know, in the legal status of the board, we can either say that one-liner, like a lot of other school districts do, and then use the terms and our operating norms, et cetera, that we delegate, or, like, has started to be done here in the past two decades, is we said we're no longer a managing board, cause we're too large of a district, and we delegate that to the superintendent, and then we abide by MSBA rules, it says the superintendent's our only employee. So that's governing. The superintendent's only, but we do not go beneath the superintendent and tell a principal how to do their job, tell a teacher how to do their job.
But that's all, that's all called out in other policies, this is about the law, it's about the general powers.
Well, then if that's the case.
The legal status of the board, this is not about the, the operating norms and all that kind of stuff. This is truly aligns to the statute.
Then if that's the case, I'm gonna go back to what Mary Me, I think you said earlier. Does, does two oh, or are we at two oh one, need to be more than a sentence? Like you were talking, but does it, does it need to be, if, if the, the, the broad scope of what we do is covered in other policies? Does it, does it need to?
I think it does, because there's more than one sentence, because it says that we have.
A little bit obnoxious.
Because if you read the whole, I mean, you could just take the statute, honestly, and just put it in here, because it has, you know, there's a lot of things like oversee library facilities, and we provide library facilities, that's all spelled out in here. We provide, um, you know, employ and contract the teachers, we provide services. I mean, everything that's spelled out in here is what a school board is, the powers and the duties of the school board.
And that aligns to the law, so.
So that's what I'm saying, it's already in the law, I'm sorry, go ahead, Director Olsted.
I guess my point is, is, is that just me, or am I the loudest one in here, every time I talk? Okay, so, um, I guess my point is, under VB, V, powers and duties, under B, I don't agree that the school board exercises administrative functions, that is the superintendent's job, to me. So, in my mind, in my mind, the superintendent exercises administrative functions. The school board also has certain powers of a legislative character, and other powers of a quasi judicial carrier, character, which quasi judicial, speaking of word salad. Um, I guess that's where I feel that belongs. Because I don't think it is our job to exercise administrative function, is my point. So, I would, I would suggest, the superintendent exercises administrative functions. The school board also has certain powers of a legislative character, because we do. But I think when it comes to the everyday administrative functions, that is Dr. Thomas's job, that is the superintendent's job.
I think it could be stated that way.
The, our old policy uses the word oversees, the school board oversees administrative functions, that.
And, and, I don't, I don't agree with that either.
Ultimately, you do, though, I mean.
Like, I agree, I, I don't like the word exercises either, right, but like, yeah, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
That was our old policy.
What?
Wherein, it said, um, school board oversees.
What letter, number?
Uh, I think it's five B now, where you are.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, VB, five B.
On our old policy.
V five, whatever.
B two.
Powers and duties.
Maybe it's here.
No, this is the proposed, this is our old policy, powers and duties.
Sorry, yeah, I'm looking at the, the new revised, um, one, so VB.
It's number two, the school board oversees administrative functions, adopts and revises policy, and it's the final body for appealing administrative decisions, which also follows the law, that's under our old policy two oh one.
Oh, sorry, yes, the old one, yes.
Two, powers.
I was reading off of the new revised version, which is five B.
Could we take, um, could we take the B, under powers and duties, and just make it, make number two, make it B? So we're basically taking, the school board oversees administrative functions, adopts and revises policy, and is the final body for appealing administrative decisions, and just make that our old policy two, and replace it where B is in the new policy of the, well, like, basically the new one.
Say that one more time, please.
Original, original policy two, powers and duties, B two, number two.
Let me go back.
Okay.
I gotta follow along, okay, yes, okay, I'm there.
So, original policy, two oh one, B two, actually, three B two, to be honest with you. Where it says, the school board oversees administrative functions, adopts and revises policy, and is the final body for appealing administrative decisions. Just take that line and replace, replace the B under five, powers and duties, B, and just replace that, that whole sentence is, because it basically says the same thing, but it says that we oversee it, instead of administers or exercises administrative functions.
And then when we oversee, we're overseeing the superintendent.
I would be fine with that, yes.
Back in there then, so we establish ourselves.
Agree with, I don't agree with that, but I agree with moving this one, and then the other one I don't think needs to be in here, so.
So we can cross, so what you're saying, what you're suggesting is to cross out the, the VB.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yep, and replace it with.
Replace it with the, our original policy.
Three B two.
Two.
Yep.
Correct.
And I think we have agreement on that.
Will of the board.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
But, yeah, I was saying, I'm not the chair.
I just want. I think what's gonna happen, and again, given the discussion here, is that this thing is gonna be cherry picked, and, and if we are, are going to be a governing board, we just place the statute in there, and we say the superintendent is authorized by the board, delegated by the board, to carry out those administrative functions, uh, which includes, of course, in his job description, hiring, firing, et cetera. Um, and, and basically making sure that the, you know, that the board, like any other governing board, um, basically doesn't tell him how, but tells him, you know, um, what is to be done.
I think the superintendent roles are actually defined in another policy, it's actually coming up, it's two oh two. So we've already got that already defined in the next policy, this is about the legal status of the board.
Right, but either, either, if the legal, so, let's look at the definition, the legal status. Either we say just the statutes and any interpretations by the courts. When we start to cherry pick out of those statutes, and only include certain pieces in here, and all that, we're gonna, it, it, that's where we come into the issue, and, you know, the, the, the legal status of the board has always been just the statutes. We've never had to use this before, and, and then, you know, in the last couple of years, then it's been, I wanna dive deep down just into this thing, but, and not the rest, so you have to be consistent, we're either a governing board, or we're not. And we're, and the reason why all this stuff is being taken out by other districts is because we're following statute, and only statute, and the court interpretation of it. Um, and then, like you said, we took the superintendent out here, but we left all this other language in here that actually contradicts other policies that we haven't gone through yet, about that superintendent per se, and that's what I'd like to avoid.
That's kind of my point, I'm wondering, if this needs to be so prescriptive, if, if, if the actual carrying out of all this stuff is covered, like, for instance, Dr. Thomas's duties are covered in other policies, does it make sense just to make this as short and sweet as possible? We're referencing statute A, B, C, and D, the particulars are, will be in the other policies. I mean, is, is, is that where you're kind of going?
Yeah.
Cause that, that seems reasonable to me, as long as it's covered somewhere, there's no sense covering it twice.
Correct.
I feel like that's what we kind of.
That's what it really did, actually, it cleaned it all up, because our other one was like this mesh of all different things that talked about compensation, and it talked about vacancies, and so, I think we're, we're really, I think we're, that's exactly what we're doing, to be honest with you, I mean.
So we really only need like one sentence there, and right now we've got, well, without the repeat of the student rep, we're still sitting on several pages here. Um, I'm sorry, that was two oh two, we're still sitting on, what, two and a half pages?
More than just subdivision one, board authority, so like, I mean, you.
That's, that's, again, that's.
Two oh, two oh one at this point. Every, every change that, that Director Bullion and I have made have been canked, and there's been one addition that Director Atkinson has made, which is now taking the B, right, the powers and duties, which is what Director, uh, Olsted just recommended, and that's now implemented. So, everything else is back to the, ex- exactly what MSBA has.
Mm-hmm.
So, so there is no, so there is no, so there's no addition.
What you're saying, um, and I, I kind of wish we could go to your direction, but I don't think that's the will of the board, so as long as.
Wait, so let's, let's ask about the will of the board.
So, we, does anybody have a problem with where we're landed right now for, for two oh one? Exchanging the original, was it B three, and replacing, uh, five B with that original language that, that Lisa talked about? Um, and then there's the other ancillary changes we made with the student rep and those kinds of things. Is there anybody with an issue, obviously, I think you do, an issue with where we're, where we're sitting right now? Good, Director Olsted?
Um, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Cause I, I appreciate what you're saying, and I kind of agree with it, but if, if the other policies put the meat on these bones, I, I guess I can live with it, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, it's just that the, again, it, some of the language in the powers and duties contradicts being a governing board, because, again, MSBA made it so that it was pliable. They didn't make it so it would be repeated verbatim, um, and hasn't updated it as such, when I don't think we, I, I, I don't know for sure, but I couldn't find one that's a managing board, that's my concern, so.
I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, well, I think we have consensus, though, so, um, so did we, if, if two oh one is consensus, did we kind of take care of two oh one point one, or we, we decided that we're going to make that basically a, a one-line with procedures underneath that we talked about?
I thought we were landing.
So the, when, so are you guys gonna take it, who's taking a crack at the procedures, are we doing that right now? Is that part of what you have been tasked to do?
Come back, I mean.
I was wondering that too, cause it may not have been on your list since we were like striking, right, is that where you're going?
Okay.
We will come back with procedures.
My concern about coming back to the board with a, even, and, and so, this work has, it was the will of the board to have the MSBA be our base.
A template, you're right, you're right.
Whatever was in our policies, or we tried to bring what was in our policies, bring it to the MSBA policy, so that we could get will of the board. My concern with Director Johnson and I coming up with any kind of procedural thing is.
Should we move that to a future study session, so there's probably not.
It literally should be a board retreat, and honestly, I would con, I would actually consider all of this work being a board retreat, because Director Johnson and I can do, I mean, us putting in the hours of pre-work together to come here to do hours of work again, I'm, I'm just saying.
Well, isn't that what we're doing right here, right now, study session? I mean, that's what we're doing, we're doing the work right here.
Right, but it wouldn't be necess, it wouldn't have been necessary for him and I to do all of the hours of work.
Oh, I think you, I mean.
I mean, because you have the MSBA, I mean, everyone has MSBA policy, everyone has our, our district policy. So, I, you know, again, just for.
It has added some organization, though, because there's, you've been able to bring the viewpoint of, you know, this, this is this, and you added this, or whatever, and this is where it came from, and, so we're not all independently doing that to get here. So I, I would just go back to what Director, um, Director White said. I do think we should bring the procedure of the two oh one point one to a study, to a future study session, or retreat, I don't care.
Cause we're gonna try, we won't protect that tonight, and I don't wanna put all of this on you guys, so.
And I think it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So.
There's, there are other boards out there that, that have.
There's some good procedures out there, so.
There are, and there are other boards that we could, we could do a really good job of, honestly, they already have it out there. We could just say, hey, what do you, what do you think of A, B, and C, and.
And move forward.
You know, and move forward, it could, it could be fairly easy.
Promise, nobody promised, everybody's promised not to resign between now and August.
That's funny.
Okay.
Funny, not funny.
Okay, are we on two oh two?
Yes. Okay, um, two oh two.
We moved on?
We did.
Wow.
I actually do wanna say thank you for doing this, cause it's really helpful to have the red in addition to the MSBA starting point. Thank you for putting this time in.
I only had one thing in two oh two, okay, and it was grammatical, I'm not an English teacher, but it seems like, uh, four A two should read, the agenda for meetings of the school board should have the responsibility of the chair and vice chair in collaboration with the superintendent, I think that's worded funny.
Fire, clap, comma, vice chair.
So it's basically you're, you're switching the comma after chair with the and after vice chair.
Oh, I see.
That's all I had.
Okay.
And then, two oh two, two A, should just reference the organizational meeting, um, and not say shall meet annually and organize and all that kind of stuff, and leave the rest of the language. Just say the organizational meeting will determine school board officers, keeping in line with the, with the naming convention. Um, and then letting the documentation on the organizational meeting cover the detail, cause one of the things that we've never done as a board is actually spell out what happens every year at the organizational meeting, which we probably should, because we do follow Robert's rules, almost to a T. Um, and that, in, including the compensation, and the, who does what, and all that kind of stuff, so just leave that really simple, cause when you start.
Can you, can you hit me at, where are you at exactly, again?
On.
Two A?
Two oh two, two A.
Got it, okay.
Just simplify that and refer it back to the organizational meeting for choo, for choosing board officers. Like it to say. Just say, um, the organiza, the organizational, the school board, um, shall hold an organizational meeting in which school board officers are chosen. Maybe not make it as passive as that, I can probably figure out a better way to say it grammatically. Um, because, um, we have changed board officers in the middle of the year. Uh, we have done, the organizational meeting is where it's chosen. And then, and then in the organizational meeting procedure, we can actually talk about, there may be times during the year with a resignation, with, uh, somebody who, you know, can't do the job anymore, or something like that, where we've had org, many organizational meetings throughout the year. So I'd like to keep that as open as possible, and to say, the organizational meeting is where you choose board officers, school board officers, um, as a general statement of policy.
So, so the annually part is?
Yeah.
Kind of?
The annual, and then. So your suggestion is that.
Can I read it out, the school board shall meet annually and organized by selecting officers?
Um, organizational meeting, uh, will determine the, um, the selection of school board officers. The organizational meeting shall determine the selection of school board officers.
You might wanna put. You might want to put annual, just.
There's no, we've done it more than annual before.
So that gives us the opportunity.
You're saying an organizational meeting might happen.
It might happen, just in that opening.
Oh, okay, I'm following you, okay.
I was gonna say under organization, section three, it actually says annually to the.
Yeah, it does say, it does say annually there too.
Say that again?
I was just saying it's getting, it's restated under organization.
Oh, yes, we can scratch that under three as well.
So do you want to just remove the word annually or?
Well.
That's just explaining the process, yeah.
One of the things that, that we started to do, but pulled it out of the other policy two oh three, which it talks about, uh, study sessions and all that. We were gonna just lay out the organizational meeting format and it just got a little too heavy for the time. So it, so we scrapped it. But, um, basically, the, we have had times where we've had another organizational meeting during the year to not only do board officers, but one time we swapped auditing firms and a few other things too. So that's just, um, give ourselves a little bit of leeway there.
So again, if you could just help us by saying, stating what you're suggesting. You just want, like, I see him.
Just crossing, just cross.
Is that what you're asking?
The school board shall meet to organize by selecting a chair, vice chair, clerk, and treasurer.
I just said that an organizational meeting will be held to choose school board officers.
Perfect.
Period.
Up here.
Up here, but then under organization, is that what you're asking?
No, so A, up there, and then B, don't put that in there. Uh, just talk about the process of the organizational meeting itself. That's it.
Maybe going forward.
Talk about what the organization is.
How to get the suggestions clear so that we're all on the same page? Because I'm, I'm not clear. Are you, did you get that?
No.
No.
No, no, no.
So the orga, so here's the thing. You talk about the organizational meeting under organization. Is that where you want to put an organizational meeting reference? Cause it's kind of not clear now.
Well, determines when the officers are elected, I'm, are selected. That's the whole point of it. You're determining how your officers are selected.
Right, and so we just had that one short sentence. Do we need to repeat it here then?
Well, you got the general statement of the policy and then you have the actual, how it happens.
Well, that, that's kind of what I'm asking. Cause in the, in the school board operating norms, we lay out study session.
Number two A say the school board meets to, meets and organizes, or the school board. So yes, we do that at the, at the organizational meeting, but like you said, if, if it, if it may happen at other times in the year.
It has to be reflected in the, in the statement under three then.
I, I put, I put here, the organizational meeting will be where school board officers are elected.
Yeah, I think that's good. Maybe change the word the to and, so like an organizational meeting.
Organization meeting.
Will determine the selection of school board officers.
Organizational meeting, yeah, I like that, actually, an organizational meeting.
The singular or?
Yeah. Unorganizational meeting, an organizational meeting.
Shall determine the selection of board officers.
Yeah, that's, I think that's good.
And. I have and, and organizational meeting.
Shall determine the selection of board officers.
Okay.
Sounds really good.
So, it, so the next question that I have is, are we? Okay, so we, we got two A fixed.
Fixed.
So you're good. Okay, and then B, are we fine? B is fine.
Yep.
Okay, are we, now we're on three.
I think that's fine, actually.
I think it's good to state how that works personally.
We just need to take out annually, right?
So that, so we've got a little bit of a mixture here. Are we talking about the organization of the school board itself after the organizational meeting? Or are we talking about the organizational meeting in number three?
Because statutorily, you have to do it. You're, you have to do it after the, the very first Monday or the, as soon as they're after. So that's, that's what that is saying right there.
That's what I'm saying. So, so this is the question that I have and this would be, you know, I, 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 I'm a little nitpicky with policy usually because I do sometimes have to defend it quite a bit, actually. So under organization, three, are we talking about the organizational meeting or the organization of the school board itself?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I, 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 now I can see that.
Cause we mixed the two.
We, we maybe don't need that paragraph or at least parts of it as I read it now that I hear, hear what you were just saying.
Okay, I think we need it actually, because it, it literally goes right back to the law.
Is it in procedure somewhere?
Literally is in the law.
Is that in procedure somewhere else, how we do?
No, actually, that, we wanted to do that last time we went over policy two oh three, which talks about the study session and the operating norms and all that.
You can't say, we can change it to the first organization.
Well, what?
Or the first organizational meeting or something like that.
Where the first meeting of the year has to be the organizational meeting, uh, in the beginning. It's not the school board meeting. It's that actually a separate meeting is called the organizational meeting.
I see what you're saying, right. That, that paragraph could say, "The school board, um, shall consist of," or something like that, "of a chair, vice chair, and treasurer." Then the four remaining members are directors and we move down to C. I think you're, you're right, man, that we should be describing what the organization is, not the process by which we create the organization. So maybe, maybe, uh, this paragraph becomes A and spells out that we're gonna be made up of a chair, vice chair, and a treasurer. B is the four remaining are directors. C becomes, uh, our ability to delegate, you know, those certain duties, uh, um, to Tammy and whoever. And then C becomes D.
The only thing I'd say is, if you look at the law, Minnesota statute one twenty-three B dot one four, Officers of Independent School District, it says officer selection on the first Monday of January of each year or as soon thereafter as practicable. The board must meet and organize by selecting a chair, a clerk, and a treasurer, who shall hold their offices for one year and, or, and until their successors are selected and qualify.
And I'm saying.
That's what that sentence really needs to be.
Then, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that it shouldn't be here. It should be, uh, maybe, maybe that, maybe that, maybe that goes up and becomes A.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, so again, I think Chair White, you and I are on the same page with what number three should or shouldn't be. So either we say a separate section with the organizational meeting, either here or where we do study session and all that to comply with statute, or we have another section that just says, you know, basically what we have to do by Robert's rules and what we have to do by statute to choose those. And by the way, we do a lot more than what the statute says. Because of everything else that does need to get done. So whatever it is, it, it, to me, you can't combine them all in that one paragraph. We need to either have a separate section. Maybe it doesn't go here, maybe it goes, I don't know, but just to me, it's three needs to make up your mind.
I think three needs a different title. Maybe it should say, three should say officer selection instead of organization. Cause there really are, it's not the organization at all.
Organizational meeting does more than just officer selection.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I don't think that that is the right terminology for three. I think it maybe should be officer selection. Cause this, we're trying to tell everybody, how are these officers actually selected? And it really ties back to the law, which is on the bottom of the policy, which is the statute.
And I get that. So again, is that, I don't care, as long as we're consistent and we have boundaries. We're not trying to put too much in there. That's all.
No, I think, then what you have listed below is listed below. I think it's the title that's throwing everybody.
No, it's actually the conflation of organizational meeting with the organizational structure, with how often the organizational meeting occurs all in one paragraph, which.
How do we fix it?
Yeah, just make up your mind, which you want to cover here. If you want to cover the organizational meeting, then we do that as a separate section or we put it someplace else. Or we, that's all I'm trying to say is that right now, it's.
I think it should be organizational meeting.
Okay.
As a header.
As a header. I mean, it isn't, I'm looking at MSBA's too, just to, that sentence is actually in a, MSBA is the school board shall meet, right? I mean, I know we added it, but.
You could say organizational meeting and officers, or election of officers. Uh, yeah, officer selection. Yeah. Although, funny enough, I had to read the now, um, I think it's gonna be C. "The persons who perform the dirt, duties of clerk and treasurer need not be members of the school board." I had to read that ten times. Yeah, because we don't follow, I have, I have, that's one of my hot points in this pop topic, so we'll get to there. Cause I don't, we, our, what our clerk does, our, our vice chair doesn't do the duties of the clerk. Actually Martha does those duties. So I feel like that's super muddy, but I don't want to go there right now, so.
No, no, no.
Let's just get to your line one, please.
Actually, we didn't get there. We never got to this policy two years ago. And, and that, and, and by the way, the, we did add for six years ago, "The duties of clerk and treasurer need to be separate." But again, the organizational meeting does delegate to other titles, roles.
Right.
And so, and that's why I'm saying, we're either gonna talk about the organizational meeting here or we talk about just the organization of the school board. But when you start to combine them all at once, and remember, the MSBA are generally broad templates, except when they do try to reflect just like certain updates, like the, I don't know, the, the, you know, bullying policy or something like that, where they tried to help out school boards. So this has always been a problem. And if we're gonna go through this, we might as well fix it correctly.
Well, and I think to clarify, as a school board, we really only need to nominate a chair, elect a chair. And then we could have, you could have somebody from the school district be a, a non-board member, be the treasurer and the clerk. And then you really, it's very optional to have a vice chair. That's the way the law is written. And that's why it, we have to like almost write this policy to be reflective of what our district is and what we do, correct? I mean, that's, that's, that's the reality of it.
We have to have a treasurer and a clerk and a chair. Legally, we have to. Now, the, the duties of the clerk. Is partly shared by Martha, who has, who we actually vote during organizational meeting, you have signature authority, um, on things. But we still, by the way, all that packet that, that Amy, you sign, that's part of your duties. But Martha also signs some of them and puts it together. So what we've done is we've kind of shared that role. That is very typical of, of boards. And we just have to make sure that the definition for the vice chair slash clerk.
That's a tricky one.
And the, and the other thing is, is realize that if you have a larger board, you can have four officers. We can't have four officers because that would make a quorum.
The quorum, yep.
So the school districts like Rosemont and stuff like that, that do have larger boards, have separate duties for each, the vice chair is not also the clerk.
So number three, selection of officers instead of organizational meeting? Cause I think we will hit meetings in a future.
That's not good, that's, that's actually a bad idea.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Cause then we can maybe move, so selection of offers will be conducted at the first meeting in June, okay?
I'm, I'm supportive of that, cause that, again, follows the law.
Okay.
Yes.
So, and we're, and then we're, are we scratching?
I did.
And we rewrote two A.
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
And then, and we're gonna, we have to change the opening paragraph then, because it talks about the annual and all that.
I think we're saying that stays because we're making this organization and officer selection title, entitled, right?
Yes.
Right here, this is to say.
Am I following me right?
So we have to, so by law, we have to have an organizational meeting.
Correct.
That's what it, it's, cause it's not, it's not a board meeting. It's an organizational meeting that has to happen the first, before the first business meeting of the year. That's the way it should state.
Correct.
And, and then in that meeting, a part of that meeting, we select the officers.
Correct.
So are, is it right that what we're capturing is that number three states for the title, "Organization and Officer Selection"?
I, I think it should just be officer selection.
I think it should be just officer selection.
Officer selection, okay, thank you.
Then, then the rest probably still works, that's fine. Okay, so we're, we're, we're clear there? Anything on any of the other pages?
Did you get the change for the, um, meeting, uh, the, 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 the chair? The, let me get it straight. The, the, where is it? The agenda.
Oh, you got that grammatical correction?
Yeah, you got that.
I think Charles got that.
Responsibility of the chair and vice chair, comma, and in collabora, or.
Not in, yes.
In collaboration.
Yes, with superintendent.
With the superintendent, yep.
So is there?
Chair, we're good.
Anything else on?
So I just, under B for vice chair clerk. Because that's not how our role is determined. I'm just wondering if, if we just leave it, but I, but I think we have to have a clerk. That's the thing. Like, we don't have to have a vice chair, but we have to have a clerk.
No, no.
For either one of these with clerk, can, can these, um, can we just add our ability to delegate certain duties?
Yeah, because I mean, even like.
Then we can, we don't have to change all the language, we can maybe just add language that gives us that ability.
Yeah.
For both the, the vice chair clerk and the treasurer, we as a board can delegate some of the, your duties to.
Well, like number four. Can we just say delegate per the, uh, per the organizational meeting? And then that leaves us the opportunity to have that organizational meeting documented?
Four, five, and six are all clerk duties and those are things that Martha does. And so.
So that's what I mean, so maybe, um.
No, no, four, um, by the way, as chair, you sign them. And then under vice chair clerk, you also sign them. Now, we delegate some of that, but by signing all of those documents, if you were to stay until two o'clock in the morning and read them, um, that's it. But the organizational meeting also delegates part of that to Martha. You are still, as vice chair clerk, the ultimate signature on those. They cannot be processed or adjudicated without your signature. So we, we gotta be careful what we're changing here, because we're not, we, and by the way, legally, I don't think we can fully delegate that.
That's what I'm saying, maybe, maybe the sentence on, maybe in, for instance, vice chair, B, let's make a B seven. At the, at the organizational meeting, uh, certain duties may be delegated to someone else. I mean, pick somebody, I mean, you know what I mean?
Dan, we have language that describes the organizational meeting, both for statute as well as, um, Robert's rules and MSBA that we can probably cut and paste in here.
Delegation of these duties will be determined at organizational meeting.
Right.
Any delegation of these duties.
Would that, would, would you put that right up?
No, I would make it like seven.
Yeah, because like, like four, the, the vice chair clerk, she'll see that an accurate record of all school district business is kept in the school board minutes. While Martha writes the minutes, we as a board approve them.
She signs the minutes.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, maybe, maybe, maybe seven.
Yes, she does.
After all the, that's what I say here, is we sign all these papers.
So is, maybe seven is delegation of any of these duties will be determined at the organizational meeting.
Okay.
Just for both, for both chair and, or vice chair and treasurer?
Just special note, we are gonna send two oh two to legal for review.
Okay.
Delegation of any of these duties will be determined.
At organizational meeting.
And you're not truly delegating, you're actually sharing. You delegate only pieces of each one of those. So again, words matter because.
Partial delegation?
Well, actually, the, the assignment, so you have this vice chair, um, clerk.
Necessary to add a seven?
What I would suggest is that you make a general statement. The organizational meeting determines the rules, just one, and then leave A, B, one, two, three, four, five, six alone, because.
Where do we put that statement?
Well, actually, we could, we could put that up at the top.
Of the.
Yeah.
Of the policy?
We could put it like, right, officers, yeah.
Under general statement of policy?
Under officer responsibilities.
And make it very general, don't make it discreet, um, because then we want to actually use the language from the organizational meeting when we talk about organizational meeting.
So what would it look like?
Just put a statement saying, "An organizational meeting, um, um, will det, I don't."
Will determine any duties to be shared?
Will determine duties, uh, will determine the board's assignment of duties. And then go on and say, "And then the officers." and then go on and say, and then the officers, in addition, the officers have these responsibilities. I think that's it.
Yep, so I guess you're saying, that the to, the, the top line gives us the ability to push these duties up.
So, number four, officers' responsibility, and then having a statement under there, such as, under three, officer selection, there's a statement before A, B, C, and S. So, under officers' responsibilities, having a sentence that says, an organizational meeting.
The organizational meeting, yeah.
Okay, so up under two, we have un-organizational meeting.
Yeah.
That's right.
Now, down here, do we wanna have the?
No, an organizational meeting.
Or, and, okay, yeah, then make it consistent, you're right.
Okay.
I'm good.
An organizational meeting will de, in case we have to have more than one, will determine the board's assignment of duties. Amen?
I think the officers.
The board's assignment of duties.
Should, that should say officers, the officers' assignment of duties.
Officer assignments of duties, yeah.
The officers?
The organizational meeting doesn't determine that, the organizational meeting determines that, let's say, Tammy has certain signature authority and can prove Emily subdued certain things, the, um, what do we, I don't even know what we officially call Martha, she's the.
Executive administrator.
Executive administrator, she has certain things, so, in, you know, and, but then the chair, the vice chair, and the treasurer still have the ultimate signature, so you can't take those away. You just say, an organizational meeting will determine the overall responsibilities of the board and administration. In addition, these responsibilities are assigned to the officers, and then you go through chair, vice chair, and treasurer. And if I had a court reporter to play that back, so I could remember what I just said, that would help.
Oh, you'll be recorded.
That'll be helpful.
Well, I don't have what she just said. I have, an organizational meeting will determine the board's assignment of duties, but she said more.
I didn't, don't ask me to repeat it.
I mean, I think you need to keep it pretty general, cause this stuff is.
And I think, I, I agree, I think that's a general statement that would work.
Yeah, okay.
I, that's fine, I think that's good.
And you need to keep it general, because a lot of this is literally spelled out in the law, of who does what, you know what I mean?
And it will also be further worse, but clearly spelled out at the organizational meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, I think.
Are we fine?
I think we're good.
Charles, I got that.
I got it.
Okay, you got it, I got it. And then.
I think we're all clear that we're just gonna change the student rep here to just have a very simple statement that we will have a student rep, and then, that's it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
We know that, okay?
Yes, we're taking that off.
Okay.
I think, I think we've talked about having just one line saying that we will have a student representative on the board, and then the rest, I think the rest all needs, can come back, or can go back to the student council, what we talked about earlier.
The student council will deal with that.
But how, what would you like it to say? What, are you proposing that?
I'm proposing you take some language out of purpose A. I think you can simplify purpose A, and take, make it much simpler. Just condense that.
So, so can I just say, make a statement? This whole policy is school board officers and membership. Um, we, you know, we have other members of the board that are non-voting members. Why don't we just make a little thing that says, and the school board reserves the right to have non-voting members, including a student representative?
Period.
Yeah, super simple.
Okay, does that work?
Rewind, repeat.
School board reserves the right to have.
Nine, twenty.
Non-voting members, including.
I didn't, okay.
The school board reserves the right.
Good way, Charles, good job.
To have non-voting members.
Including.
Including?
A student representative.
That's good, it'll be condensed, hopefully all on one page, or two pages then, or so, we're close.
Do I dare move on to two oh eight?
I think we're getting close.
My only thing with two oh eight is, under section two, general statement of policy, uh, the red, that was added back from ours. Again, I feel like it's like subjective language, I can't handle it. Like the professional, conscientiousness and professional manner, like, again, define that, right?
But it's also not just employees, um, we have policies that cover, um, visitors, we have policies that cover, um, um, students, et cetera, so that is, I, I would scratch re, the red, and I know you guys put a lot of work into that, but it's.
No, we just pulled it from one to br, it was, it was in ours.
Yeah.
It was in ours, and that's what we were trying to do, is to make sure we're capturing, and then we can discuss.
And, and again, that was.
I appreciate that you added it back to show the difference, but, yeah, I personally would.
I went to our.
I would strike it.
Two oh eight, two oh eight, too.
Oh, anybody have a problem scratching two, the last sentence?
I don't have a problem with that.
The red?
Yeah.
The red added section.
I'm fine with that.
Anybody have a problem?
And then.
We're taking that out?
Yep.
Taking the red out.
And then, under three, C, um, the policies may be proposed and all that kinda stuff. That was written, and that has been, that was previously discussed, that we were gonna have to go back and then change some of that, now that we have a policy committee, and, uh, we have a different process. Um, so, um, the, and then, and then also the idea of submitting the superintendent designated review, basically, that also contradicts with the role of the chair and the vice chair meeting with the superintendent. So, that has been on the scratch list for two and a half years, until we are gonna go through this, or three years now. Again, um, plus it didn't hold water before that.
So.
I think that.
The first sentence, the first sentence can probably stay.
Yeah, I'd like to understand the intent of that. I feel like the intent is, is that, um, any school board member, any employee, any student, any resident district can propose a policy. That's the intent of the, that is the intent of.
Kinda almost become procedure?
Um, kind of, yeah, yeah.
Am I reading it right?
Yeah, because at the end of the day, that's the intent of the line.
If we scratch that, would that be in, we, we have a, a, a pla, a procedure in place to get policies heard, does it, does it need even to be on here?
Yes. No, I, that's why we needed to rewrite that, and then also talk about, um, uh, another thing that was discussed, and we never got to it, like, I don't know, three or four years ago, was, uh, proposing policies, cause policies also reside in statute and all that kinda stuff. So, did we wanna tighten that up, that they can say, policies may be suggested, or whatever? Um, something to kinda cover the district from being inundated with that, to have it like be submitted to a certain place, or something to give some guidance? That's what, you know, so C was.
Sorry, I'm just taking a little spot.
C's never really been the way it was anyways, and then with the introduction of the policy committee, and, um, changes to first, second, third readings, and all that kinda stuff.
Well, so then, if we just scratch the second sentence, is that enough?
Well, that's, I'm asking, I don't.
I'm fine with that.
Cause the, the rest of it's.
It's, that's exactly how it should be, yep.
All right, so we're gonna scratch C, sentence two, under number three. Um, anything else on two oh eight? I see there's some added language.
I don't think so. We had nothing on that one.
Director Olson, you're good on two oh eight?
Yes.
Okay. Two ten. Any questions or additions on two, either did I? That's all pretty much probably statute.
Yeah.
Yep. It's legal definition of conflict of interest.
Yep, two eleven? That seems like kinda the same thing.
Yep.
And then.
I don't think we can change two eleven much, tell you the truth either.
All right, then, two thirteen. Excuse me.
There, what was it? Last time we adopted this, I know we had to make some changes to it.
Twenty-two?
Yes, we're up to two thirteen.
I can't remember what it was, but we've actually butted against this a couple times, and I, and I need to reread it.
Board adoption was December twelfth of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, but there was something about it with, um, and Dr. Thomas, um, I'm gonna ask your question, because I know that when we've come up with ad hoc committees, there was language in here, and I couldn't remember what it was, and I couldn't find it, that we wanted to be more discreet with between, um, board pol, board, um, board, um, committees, and the rest of them being like ad hoc, I can't remember what it was, but we ran into it a couple times in the past couple years. And, uh, maybe I just need to review it again, um, when it's not nine thirty at night.
So, there, the, our board committees, and then we have various councils, and there've been, there's been a ad hoc committee since I've been here, and that was just during the strategic plan. There was a task force, or something like that, that was, um, uh, attended by the board, uh, s, members of the board. So, so generally speaking, that's, that's my only interaction with the ad hoc, everything else has been management committees.
Okay.
Or, uh, management councils, whatever. We've also been trying not to call those committees, not to confuse them with board committees, but, yeah, there's only the three currently.
I, I, hopefully this does it, and then we've had questions on C, the second, the, the, on, what is it? Three, C, um, because we've always used the organizational meeting to do this, and one of the reasons why we had to was because we had committee meetings going on that week that needed coverage, like Southwest Metro, and, um, finance, and stuff like that. So, we've left this open, um, and we've had the same language in here for years, and then it's always been that we never did this on C, the second sentence. Um, now, people can always change committees through the year. Um, they just ask the chair and say, hey, I don't wanna be on this one, or I can't make the time anymore, but, um, and it leaves it open, but then we've had conversations with, well, why are we deciding everything at the organizational meeting? And that was because the meetings start right away.
Well, when you guys do your org meeting, those are, that's always in January.
Right.
And these councils are interagency, things are ongoing.
Right.
So.
Right, so this, this, this follows what we do, C. What, how, how does it not? I'm confused at what you're saying.
Well, the second sentence said, board members will be assigned no later than the second regular board meeting, which is basically in February.
No, it says, it says a second regular board me, maybe, that word second is not right. So it should be no later than the, it's at the organizational meeting, so whatever, whatever the.
Should just write it in.
It's no later than the.
Or just say.
Organizational meeting.
Organizational meeting.
Will be, will be assigned at the organizational meeting.
Right.
Yep.
You said that the same time, that's very good.
Perfect.
Unity, that's our core belief.
All right, so that's, anything else, so C's taken care of, correct?
Yeah, I had nothing else on this one.
Anyone else on two, where we at, thirteen?
And then do we keep each board member to be assigned to at least one?
I think so.
One committee.
Yeah, I think so.
All right, two fourteen.
Oh my gosh, are we done?
The only thing that I say is, could Tammy read over twenty, two fourteen, to just to make sure the language is okay with reimbursable expenses, and all that kinda stuff, that was my only.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, any kind of travel or things that you all do aligns to our admin protocol. So, I mean, every employee, board member, it's in the, that's the protocol.
Just make sure the language is consistent, that's all, cause I know that one.
I wanna know the last time a board member would travel out of the state on official business.
I did, but it wasn't reimbursed.
On official business?
I went on to Florida to a school board, national school board conference, just recently.
Like, if you had to go to like NSBA, the national, something like that.
I did go to the National School Board Association, but I went to the School Boards for Academics Excellence, for Achievement. So it's a different, it's a different version of the National School Board Association.
Not very often, all right.
But they are an official organization.
So, there's nothing on, you, you, what you said, have Tammy?
Just Tammy review it, yeah, just make sure.
Matches, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, is, do we have an expense policy, or, can we just like reference that?
Well, that's what I was saying, we haven't, the board touches this, and really Tammy needs to look over it.
Not that we would probably ever use it, but just to.
Got it, Roger that.
Two hours.
Yeah.
We're good.
All right, um. We're twisting the agenda here. Any, uh, we have lots of future topics to discuss of our study session, so I would.
I think we added one tonight.
We did. I have a vacancy procedure. And you mentioned, is, something about an organizational meeting procedure that you are concerned need to be tied up? I mean, could we could combine those?
Well, the vacancy needs to be a policy and procedure in order to make sure it's out there. And then the organizational meeting, um, the actual outline of it, not, I mean, obviously, it may change a little bit, but the purpose, the outline, and stuff like that really should be memorialized, like we have the content of the study session, and the content of this, of this, of the, um, of business meetings, just to be consistent, and also to avoid a whole bunch of us saying organizational, and no definition of it. And that Martha has the organizational step by step, too, cause that's usually split between chair and former chair.
We have organizational me, we have, um, regular meeting next month, so we can.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that and the vacancy can probably.
I, I'm sorry, if, if we can tackle this at a, at a, uh, study session, so you guys aren't carrying all the water, you're not saying, but if this is gonna be an easy lift.
The organizational meeting part, fine.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's.
So the vacancy procedure, we will discuss.
Cause that's, that's pretty cut and paste, as far as the, the layout and everything else, how, how all that's gonna work.
Memorialized.
Yeah, yeah, and because we're referring to it, we should keep it in the same.
Okay.
We can.
I have a question.
And you wanna memorialize in policy, which one?
Well, that's kinda the, the question, do you wanna put it into the operating norms, or the organizational meeting?
We could put it in operation.
You know, that's where the study session and the board, um, and the board layout is.
Yep.
Uh, and then we've got language in there that says you can, as long as it contains these parts, you're good. Um, so it could be in different, you know, pieces, but that's, I'm gonna leave that up to you, but I'm kinda, um, going off the look on your face.
Well, so, I appreciate clarity, like, that I, I, that I'm clear on exactly what you're stating. If it is memorializing what the organizational meeting looks like, and adding it to the policy that memorializes what our regular meeting looks like, and what our study session is, we can, we can do that, but, um, anytime, you know, you put something out there and just hope that I'm catching your meaning, I wanna make sure that I know what exactly you're asking to memorialize, and where you'd like it put. If it's in a certain policy number, if you want it in a policy by itself, I want, that's the clarity I'm looking for, because you, we could sit and do the work, we think we know what you asked, and then we come back to this.
So are you clear on what she's asking?
Um, I'm cl, clear that she wants it memorialized, the organizational meeting, what I'm not clear on is where you want it. And in additional.
Two oh three point something, we'd create one, we'd have to.
An additional point something, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, and I don't care where you put it.
Wherever it's most convenient for you.
Yeah. You don't care until we do it the way you don't want it done.
But it'll be a two oh three somewhere.
The situation that I want to avoid.
So as long as it's in two oh three, we're good.
Yep.
All right, anything else for future? We're gonna have some, plenty of work to do. I have some.
Is it possible to recap what we have pending?
Pending, uh, what I was thinking of, um, board goals, maybe May-ish, is what I'm thinking. Um, there was some talk about.
So board goes our survey, and then we do our goals from that?
Uh, well, that's a good question.
Cause when normally, we do the board's survey of ourselves, and then from that, we do the goals, and the goals, we want the goals in, um, at least the survey discussed, and the goals should be part of the next year. That's the way we've done it before, yeah, so after June thirtieth.
We didn't do our goals this year. They weren't done last fall, so there's a miss there.
We'll, we'll work together.
So we're basically working under no goals.
Then.
Well, we did kinda have a discussion.
We did not. It did not come back for conversation.
It got, we did, and it got sub, it got subjugated by another issue.
Two things, two things in, in April that I, with the modification of that twenty-five thousand dollar authorization that we have, we were gonna talk about that, thought we could do that in April. thought we could do that in April, and then, um, whether or not we wanna have a negotiations ad hoc committee for this go-around, just have that discussion and determine whether or not we wanna move in that direction, and then we can determine how it will work, once we say yes. So those are the, uh-
Studer results, I think we'll be able to have by April as well.
Okay.
And if there's anything I highly doubt, legislatively, we'll all provide that update, too.
Okay, and then I think that's-
I think one of the things that, I don't know where it was brought up, but reviewing the A and I plan, and re, kind of re-looking at those dollars, I know that, you know, some of that is in the works, but bringing that to the board, so that we can talk about that, as far as that, the, we're in the third year of that plan right now.
So what, what are you, what are you thinking as far as that, that timing for the board?
So, probably like in May is where I would present that as part of- Yeah, I, I think, so what, my intention around that is to look at that third year of the current plan, to see if there needs to be any revisions around that third year, to realign to our new strat plan, um, so that's, that's the one aspect that I wanna look at, that for sure, because if so, then there might be some changes with the budget, so I wanna make sure that's all included in, in our, our budget proposal.
And that comes first in a study session, would that, I, I shouldn't make that a statement, that's a question, does that, does that come first in a study session?
That would be my preference.
So, yeah, we, we certainly can for, for, for May.
For May.
I would agree, because, um, when it, when, yeah, I think it's important for us having dialogue before going to a regular meeting.
Yeah, and that's how it's been done in the past, is it comes to a study session first, and then, um, the other thing that we talked about bringing back was, um, having, getting an update on the cell phone policy, particularly at the high school.
Okay, so-
So that should have already been on the list, but maybe-
I do have it written down, I will have to admit that when that was-
Then it needs to go to a policy committee.
No, no, she, she just wants an update from-
How's it going?
How's it going?
Yeah, I think the previous board was very clear, for those members who are still here, that, I, I, I mean, I recall-
Is, is that, and you did, you did mention that, and I didn't get consensus, and that was my fault, so now, we had, she's bringing it up, is that something that-
It's an update from Principal Isaac, and talking about moving in.
Just a, just a general, this sounds going, this that we didn't see.
Middle school and high school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be, yeah.
Okay.
K twelve, but-
Dr. Thomas, can I ask a question about the A and I, because I know this is a biennium year? Um, is there, we're good with the third year of funding, or can that change this year legislatively? Okay.
That, that, no changes.
Yeah, because no changes are gonna happen this year, so getting an, an update at the end of the year, I think is-
Maybe after the school year's over, we'll plug it in somewhere.
The only concern is that if, you know, there was discussion about potentially changing it at the high school, and them needing some lead time to do that, right, with-
Yeah, we ran into that last year, so we do need to give them enough lead time.
Do we need to give them lead time?
So if we did it in July, would that be early enough?
That's exactly when we did it.
The cell phone policy, so.
Because we needed to, because they, when we update the policy, they have to put it in the student handbook.
All right, then, so if July works, I'll put it down.
Does that give him enough time?
Well, we did get some pushback on timing on that last year, so.
When did it, when was it discussed last time?
It was July, and there was pushback, if can we implement it within the next couple weeks, or whatever, whatever it was, so.
That was a whole rollout.
Yeah, that was a whole rollout, that was a little bit different, it was, you know, that was going-
This is more of an update for us, to see how they think it's going, I think we'll, we'll leave it July unless I hear something.
Yeah, I'm just, again, I'm gonna be cognizant, if he needed more time, do we pull that into June, or, I don't know.
Maybe I'll call John and ask.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do that, I'll, I'll do that.
That's nice.
Anything else?
Better schedule full through like August now, so.
Yeah, I'm through, so I have one for July, I have nothing in August yet, so, um, those are the things that are, that are coming forward, and we'll, we'll tackle them. If there's nothing else, we can adjourn.